I call this meeting to order.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Trustee Covey?
Here.
Trustee Seaton?
Here.
Trustee Butler is not here and I've not heard from him, nor have I heard from Trustee Young. Would you like to excuse, make a motion to excuse them? And if they show up, then we'll, we'll decide that they came late. Sorry, thank you, you're right.
Okay, I make a motion to excuse Trustee Butler and Trustee Young.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Roll call vote, Peterson?
Yes.
Covey?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Passed, thank you very much. We do have a quorum.
Okay. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have presentations?
We have a presentation today by librarian Letitia Bowles.
Thank you Kathy. In 2020, when the library closed during COVID, one of the things that I worked on was the local history records and the books that we had in the Heritage Room. And so in doing that, I found a whole section of library history that was just in a box. And so now I'm kind of working on going through some of those records, trying to put them in order and get them together and organized in a way that, that would be helpful and useful so that we can see what our history is.
Can we pause for a moment and welcome Trustee Young? We're happy to see you. Go ahead.
So I wanted to share with you some of the things that we found in our local history files for, specifically for the library. And we have, as, well, I don't know if you know, our library was first built in nineteen, well, our first library building was built in 1912 and opened in 1913 on the corner of Buena Vista in Florida. And that was our Carnegie Library. Then when that building was determined to be unsafe, they tore it down and built our Covell Building, which is on the corner of Florida and Buena Vista, more on the corner. And then we moved in here in, what, 2003? So we have, we found in our history files, the board minutes, starting in 1929. Yeah, so June 3rd, 1929 is the first minutes that I've found. And it's really kind of interesting, they list all of the, all of the bills that the library paid for the month, all of the things that the board discussed. And some of the topics just keep coming back. You know, we keep talking about, you know, having more space for the library and do, being able to do more programs for the community and adding various collections. In the 40s, it was adding a collection of phonograph records. In the 1980s, it was adding a potential luxury item of video cassettes. And you know, and so now we're at DVDs, or should we go streaming? Right? Because that's kind of the way our technology is changing. It's kind of interesting to see that in the library. Also found some interesting staff things. In the 1950s, the library, our library got a Gaylord electric charging machine that helped you stamp, you put the card, the borrower card and the due date card in the machine and it would stamp it with the due date. And then the staff could file it. So it's kind of the beginnings of our computer system that we have now. So those were a couple of things that we found in the minutes of the library board. And I also think it's interesting that as you get closer to, I think it's in the 1960s, they got a packet, just like you got today, almost exactly the same stuff. Agenda, minutes of the previous meeting, usage report, bills for the month, and a budget report. So pretty much what you got today, right? Here we are 60 years later and you get the same kinds of information.
The good news is, it's not hand typed.
This is true.
Yeah, and all of these, yeah, they're either hand types or a couple of them are even written out in handwriting. So this morning I wanted to take a look, see what other things we had. And I know I have a few minutes, but, so if you ever want to come take a look, I'll be glad to show you because I think Kathy will tell you, I could talk about this all day.
And rightly so.
So, one of the things we have is this, this is our borrowers register. So these were the people that, when they got a library card, they went in this little green book. So this starts again in 1928 and goes up to, I believe it's 1942, yeah, through 1942. In looking through it, I did find one, well, I'm sure there's lots of notable people in here that we would know. But one in particular that caught my eye. And that is this gentleman. In April of 1928, number 75 that year. A gentleman named Victor Jory. And his wife, Mrs. Victor Jory, got library cards here at our library. And so if you don't know, Victor Jory played Alessandro in Ramona during this time period. So that's probably why he was here.
He was also a Hollywood actor and he later directed the play. He stayed with it for like 50, well, 50 or 60 years.
We also have circulation records, and I'm sorry, but these ladies put my handwriting to shame. These are like your usage statistics that we put together for you every month, except these are daily. So every day they would go through and mark how many of each category of books that were checked out. So this is for each day. And then across the top would be, you know, 100s, 200s, fiction. And this side is the adult side and this side is children.
That's a lot of work.
It's all handwritten, every month. And then at the bottom, we had, we were part of a rotating county collection. So we had to keep track of those as well separately from books that our library owned. So we have those, and those begin in 1939. And then the one other thing I was going to show you real quick is this, this is from the CB Covell Building Library on the corner down the street here. And it is from the opening dedication and open house of the Hemet Public Library in the CB Covell Memorial Library Building. And the one thing I'd like to share with you, so it's a sign-in book of every, of the people who came to the dedication. And I think it's interesting that the very first name that we see, the very top, is Clarence B. Swift. It gives his name and his address of 440 North Taylor in Hemet. Clarence, if you don't know, gave the library a large collections of photographs. He was a photographer in the area and he donated his photograph collection to the library. It's also interesting, you can see everyone wrote their address, their street address, their mailing address in the book. So you can see where, where people were living at the time. This would be 1971, when this building opened. So you can see where, where people were living and where town was. Because most of them are going to be right here in this, in our downtown area, even in 1971. So, this is just some of the things that we have downstairs. Like I said, I could talk to you about it for days if you'd like. Anytime you'd like to come down and take a look, I'd be glad to show you. Thank you very much.
Very interesting, very.
I have a question, Letitia.
Listen to the mic.
Would you be exhibiting these in a case?
Yes.
Anytime soon?
So, yeah, sorry, that was the thing I was going to tell you. So we're going to be working on, oh wait, I will probably be working on cataloging these, so they'll be in our system. And then I was thinking in April, that would be a good time to put out a library display. And we could put out your, your drawers.
Oh yes.
The library, the catalog cards that we still have, because somebody wants to keep them.
The other thing that's of significance is, when we were looking through, thank you, when we were looking through the minutes, what we noticed when they, you know, they itemized who, who was being paid, one of the vendors that struck us was Baker &amp; Taylor. Baker &amp; Taylor is the company we buy books from. And I think we saw the first entry in 1929. So we, and, and let me tell you, I'm going to be pointing that one out to the company when I speak to them next week and say, do you know, we have been a customer for nearly 100 years? Isn't that amazing?
It is.
Yes.
Wow.
It sure is.
Same company.
Yep.
Wow.
There are actually several companies that are listed that we still do business with or are still, you know, in the library world. Baker &amp; Taylor was one, Gaylord.
Highsmith, did we see Highsmith?
There's a Library Journal or Literary, Junior Literary Guild. Junior Literary Guild, I think is another one. So yeah, I noticed several companies that we did business with then, we still do now. Press Enterprise, the Hemet News. I mean, it broke down everything, gas, water, electric. They had a maintenance fund for quite a while and a contingency fund as well.
I know they had Friends when we moved into this building, but when did the Friends start?
19, the Friends began in 1964, 65.
That's 50 plus.
Yeah, so that would have been at the end of the Carnegie Library and then beginning of moving into the Covell Building.
Thank you so much, Letitia. Moving on, we have no public, so.
Oh, I do need to mention, our Zoom link is down today. Sorry, this is being livestreamed, so people can still see, they just can't comment. And being recorded and will be out on the city's YouTube page.
Very good.
Communications from the public?
Yeah, we just talked about that. None?
Seeing no public, we'll move on. Consent calendar.
And will we accept the consent calendar in its entirety? We need a second.
Second on that, I'll take second. All in favor?
Roll call vote, Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Covey?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Trustee Seaton?
Yes.
That's been approved four to nothing. Thank you. So I want to share with you, Letitia and Susan Corona, our literacy coordinator, are hitting the road on Monday. They are driving to Sacramento because we could not get a flight that made sense for them. They will be in Sacramento Tuesday and Wednesday for a conference on, from the State Library on literacy and how it, how the State Library works and it's a good orientation. I went about 10 years ago and this year I decided to send Letitia with Susan, since Susan is new. And so they will be gone Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Letitia will be off Thursday and Friday and back on Saturday. So, thank you. But we wanted to let you know that was up and coming.
Will that make you a little shorthanded then?
Yes. Yes, very, but it is what it is.
Absolutely.
And it's important that they get this information. You'll also find enclosed the March 2025 Activities Calendar. In this particular, well, in this particular rendition of it, it will probably evolve. There's other things coming and we do put out as we make changes. Your calendar looks like that, front and back. There's the front right there. And there are, it is constantly evolving, which is a good thing. And so I just wanted you to know what's going on in your library in terms of activities.
There it is.
Yeah, I think it's your last two pages. So that was the new business. I will move the calendar portion to old business in the future. Okay?
Very nice.
Nice.
And that was designed by librarian Jordan. I do have an update on the shade structure. If you look out on the patio, it's not there yet. I asked today and got an email and they've apologized, the company that's going to be doing the installation. They're apologizing, their crews have got a backlog. And he's been asking for an installation date. And he's going to confirm a date and get back to us by the end of the week. And he will be looking at swapping crews around to get us set up. So hopefully next month, we'll take a tour. So that's what's going on with our shade structure.
Kathy, I have a question. At any time, have we thought about or discussed having shade on these patios?
Yes, I have thought about it. I think what we will do is, on the gazebo, it's not a gazebo, but on the patio area, we can look at getting some cloth, shade cloth done and put it over. There are several other places that I want to do that. For the most part, in the center areas of the patio, no. We can look at getting umbrellas and that sort of thing, so it's, it can come and go as we need. If you'd like, I can certainly put that on my radar and see what we can find.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to give you an update on the solar project. It went out for bid January 27th, so last month. I believe the bids close next week for bidding on the project. There was a, an informational meeting where at least six or eight of the people who are interested in the project came out here, did a walkthrough with Public Works and me because I decided I needed to know what was going on. And so that was a couple of weeks ago. So I hope we get some good bids, that we can go. I'll be talking with Public Works and they will make the decision really because they know more than I do. But I want to be, I'm involved in the project, so I will keep you posted as to what's going on and what the dates look to be.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports, trustees' reports. We are having a Friends book sale this coming weekend. Setup will be tomorrow and Saturday will be 10 to 2. And as I, I spoke on Tuesday at the Friends meeting, this is not about the money, but about the outreach to the community. So we're looking forward to that and that's all I have.
I, I don't know that it's time or not to, I had a question in regards to the, on the expenditures?
Sure, we should have brought it up sooner, but go ahead. What's your question?
Okay, on page, blah, 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 8.
Okay.
That, on the books, that it's a 00000.
That is correct. The first account, 6100, this is a really good opportunity for me to tell you what you're reading. The first one listed is account number 6100, that's administrative services, that's me.
Okay.
Okay? Years and years ago, books came out of this account. Five or six years ago, we changed how we did our programming and so on. And books come out of account number 6101 for adult books. So if you look further on, you're, it's going to say, and they moved it out of general fund into development impact fee, which is your 63-6101 or 6, 363, I'm sorry, 3636101 and 3636102. That's adult and children's. So you'll see, when you look further in, on page, what is that? Sorry. One more, there it is. Page 15. 14. You'll see, towards the bottom, adult services programs and you'll see, there's where the book budget is for adults. Okay? And then you'll see children's services and you'll see that's where those books are coming from.
Okay.
Okay? It's just a question of how we have, I have been instructed to spend the money and budget for it.
Okay.
Okay? Great, no, it's a great question and I thank you.
Did you have anything else? Did you have anything else?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gail?
No report.
No reports.
Well, I do have some stuff. Like I always do. First thing, our next meeting is scheduled for March 20th. And you'll notice at the end of your agenda, it says it's scheduled for March 20th at 2:00 PM. March 20th at 10 o'clock, I think it is, we're having up here in this space, a business expo. The city is putting it on and I goofed, I missed that. So I would like to have you consider changing the meeting, either skipping March completely and going to April, or we can move the meeting to another date.
What date do you suggest? If you change the date, what do you suggest?
April? Okay. You don't have a date? April?
You don't have anything else?
I can give you the date for April. Maybe.
April sounds fine to me.
That would be April 17th, correct. So.
We already have a meeting scheduled for that day.
Oh, well, how convenient is that? Okay, then we'll just, we'll just not have a meeting and we'll go to the April, the April meeting, perfect. Okay, thank you, I appreciate your generosity. So your next meeting will be in April.
Okay, so no meeting in March?
Correct.
Do we need to move on that?
Beyond that, we got our tree planted. Hemet Beautiful is coming in April, it's the 28th, which is a Saturday. The applications for volunteering is on the city's website. And this year I did not put the library in as a project because we got a lot of love last year, so we'll spread that love elsewhere. But I am working on that. We have March 13th. The city is recognizing those employees with milestone anniversaries, 5, 10, 15, 20, 25 and 30 and, yeah, 30 I think is the last for this year. But this year we have two employees that we are honoring. We're honoring Eric Pelkey for 10 years of service. And we're honoring Jennifer Walsh for 20 years of service.
Wonderful.
So she's, they've both started their one year, you know, so they're in the 21 year now. The 10, 11 year. So we will be honoring them in, in March. Arts and culture, just so you know, I am part of that ad hoc committee. And we had a meeting Monday, it kind of fades together. I submitted a grant for asphalt art. And our goal is to paint down Harvard mastodons.
Oh wow.
Would be really kind of cool. We'll see, they are only giving 10 grants away. And it's for not only US, but Canada and Mexico are also part of that. So only 10 between three countries. We'll see, we'll see what happens. But I think it's going to be a really cool project and I'm looking forward to that. The last thing I did not put on here is, I submitted a budget, a proposal to the city on Wednesday? Tuesday? I don't know, I submitted it. Yeah, it was Tuesday. For the most part, we've been instructed to go status quo, you know, you arrange things if you can. But there are some things coming up that we need to deal with. One of them is our public network servers. They are six years old. If they go down, our public network goes down. We can't have that. So I did put in the full amount to replace. My hope is we can get involved with E-Rate next year and, you know, limp it along until we can get it, get approved and then install.
Replace.
Yeah, which would save us considerably. So the budget has been submitted. I did include also an extra part-time library assistant to help us cover those Tuesdays and Saturdays. Since we have extended our hours, we need, we need that help. Our Tuesdays have become very, very busy, which is wonderful. With the exception of last Tuesday when it was so bitterly cold. But door count was right back up there this last Tuesday. So people are excited that we're open Tuesday afternoon. And if we are able to add another part-time, we can bump those hours even more.
I have a question to go back to the change of meeting. Do we need to move on that, approve it?
That would be lovely.
Okay.
That way it's official.
I will motion to change the meeting.
No, it's canceled next.
Cancel next month and move and.
And move it to the April, move.
Move it to the April 17th.
Cancel March.
Cancel March.
And then regular meeting in April.
Regular meeting in April. Can I have a second? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, sorry.
Roll call vote.
That way it's just very clear.
Yep.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Covey?
Yes.
Trustee Seaton?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes four to zero.
Yay.
Appreciate it.
Kathy? Do we need to, or can I ask about the, the cost for the sign-out front? You said that's in the budget.
I have put that in the budget, I put thirty thousand dollars in on that. We'll see what the city does and then if necessary, if they're willing to split the fees or say, well, we just can't do it, then we'll find alternatives funding on that.
All right, at the same time, I might mention that yesterday we put a sign on there about our book sale.
And yes, I had to take it down because you could not read it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it really, you could not, it just, it looked white. You could not see what it said. So we'll find some other way to get a message board out there.
Instead of a message board, could we have a banner?
Funny you should ask. Well, this is a Friends of the Library thing, but I think it's important. I did go to Curicopy yesterday to ask that very question. What would it cost for a six-by-three banner that says, "Book Sale, Saturday"? Simple as that. And it's going to run about a hundred and eight dollars each, but it's vinyl, reusable.
Yay.
As long as you're, you know, we're careful about the words.
Yeah.
We don't change a book sale to a Friday.
No.
Or a Sunday.
No.
It can be reused, so, you know, when you start thinking of it in those terms, I would recommend, I will recommend to the Friends that you get two. One for the fence here on Latham and one for the balcony here.
That's cool.
Yeah.
We can have that in time for this one.
No.
No.
It takes three to five days. Had I been sharper on that, we would have, we, we might have been able to squeak it through.
We didn't think about canceling it.
Right. Exactly.
But we will have it for the next one.
Exactly correct.
Okay. Would that be the end of your report? Kathy?
That's, thank you, I'm done.
Having no other business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.